Uh, meeting come to order. Welcome to the forty-fourth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence your cell phones. And if you're appearing today, please come forward, introduce yourself and your client. And if you're here to testify on any matter on the agenda, please come forward. Be sworn in by Ms. Hori and give us your name and please spell your names for the commission's reporter. Uh, commissioners, I see we have some minutes.
Yes, Chair. Motion to approve the minutes of the thirty-seventh and thirty-eighth meetings as previously speculated.
Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. The minutes of the thirty-seventh and thirty-eighth meetings are approved. Let's move into the public hearing. Calling agenda item number one, transfer application number one-nine dash one-four-eight-eight-nine from Jai Kai Chi Restaurant.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. To my right is President Young Ran Ahn. We have no changes to the investigator's report. She is on temporary, on a temporary license. She had one problem is that she learned that when she does her time card, it has to be English names instead of Korean.
Thank you very much.
Same problem she had.
Thank you, Mr. Lu. Ms. Hori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This application has received zero written protests, zero letters of support, applicant assessment statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the May ninth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Gonnabon prior to the public hearing.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
I have one question. Mr. Lu, is your client, I see on your floor plan that you folks have enclosed dining rooms within the space?
Enclosed. The whole place they can see, it can be seen.
Yeah, but I'm seeing that there's rooms and that there's doors here. So is, I'm sure she's aware of the rules when it comes to doors within the license premises.
Right. Thank you.
Very good.
Motion to approve transfer application number one-nine dash one-four-eight-eight-nine. Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number one, transfer application number one-nine dash one-four-eight-eight-nine is approved.
Thank you.
Moving. Calling agenda item number two, application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-six from Jungle Bar LLC.
Good afternoon, Chairman O'Gouldano, members of the commission.
Please tell us.
Change due to leave appearing for Jungle Bar. We'd like to ask the continuance of this matter to June sixth.
Okay, so before we grant the continuance, Ms. Hori, can we have anybody here to testify for or against this?
Right, if this is a public meeting, if someone has appeared to testify, then the commission needs to take that action.
Yes, Mr. Bear, pardon?
Um, I'll go ahead and wait until next week.
We will keep the public hearing open. Commissioners, so there's a request for a continuance, how long?
Until next week.
Till next week? One week with the public hearing to be kept open.
Motion to continue, agenda item number two, application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-six to June sixth, public hearing kept open. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number two, application number one-nine dash one-five-two-three-six is continued for one week with the public hearing kept open.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-five-five-five-eight from Shin Zen Eight-O-A Court.
To my right is Mr. Ken Wai Louis. He is the president, he is president of consul Wayne Luke. He has been operating on temporary license and is doing pretty well. And the record reflects Wayne Luke as consul.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hori.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. This application has received one written protest, zero letters of support, applicant assessment statutory requirements for the submission of this application. And for the record, a summary of the April fourth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Miyashiro prior to the public hearing.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
I have a question.
Commissioner Miyashiro.
Just to let you know, do you and your client see the letter of protest?
No, I, uh...
Could you provide me one? You said, sorry.
Yes, we have.
Okay, I was gonna ask if any effort was made to contact this person, but I assumed that it would be known. We just saw the letter for the first time. And I appreciate you reading it quickly, Mr. Lu. Any response to the...
Yeah, basically, it's just a plain restaurant, no music, no nothing. And we had another, you know, he's taken over from another restaurant that was there, which didn't have any, no issues problems or anything. It used to be a Japanese restaurant before.
Do you happen to know where Farrington Street is relative to the license or the proposed premises? It's called Farrington Street, I know a better.
Farrington would be, I think, one block down to the...
Towards the freeway?
Going towards, yeah, going towards that area. That's the first street from, from when you come off the freeway.
I would just be mindful that there is a neighborhood right across the street in between the freeway and if you can be mindful of your neighbors.
Yes. He will.
Thank you.
Any further questions or type of action?
I have a question.
Vice Chair Gonnabon.
Since you've represented that there will be no music, what is the stage gonna be utilized for?
What are you using the stage for? It was K-Fire before.
The stage is a VIP room.
On the stage?
Yes. It was, it was a VIP section, like private dining, for six people, but it's not open yet.
You've converted it to a stage?
No, no, not. I leave it to the same.
So, what's gonna occupy the area then?
Just a regular dining table, dining chairs, same like before.
Okay. All righty. Okay, motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-five-five-five-eight.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number three, application number one-nine dash one-five-five-five-eight is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number four. This is a license application, special license application, application number one-nine dash one-six-four-nine-zero for Blue Chara Connections Incorporated.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Naomi Paul, on behalf of the applicant, present to my right is owner Kathleen Lynn Purchasebees. And then to her right is Evan Waterbury, the manager. We have provided spelling to the reporter. We have no changes to investigative report.
Thank you, commissioners.
Ms. Paul, this is for the United States Conference of Mayors event, correct?
Yes, correct.
Yeah, motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-six-four-nine-zero. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number four, application number one-nine dash one-six-four-nine-zero is approved.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Good luck. Calling agenda item number five, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-two-two from Events International Inc. Mr. Snyder.
Good afternoon, Rick Snyder, CEO, President of Events International.
Misses, do you have any question?
Yes, this for the rodeo, correct, Mr. Chairman?
Correct. I think it's our eighth year.
Yeah. Eighth year, you said, and you've been doing it the entire time, correct?
Correct.
Awesome. And so is it, is it gonna be similar to last year's?
Almost exactly.
Awesome. Thank you.
Same regime.
Brings a wine man out. Very nice.
It's good. Motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-two-two. Second.
It's been moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-two-two is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Giddy up, giddy up. Calling agenda item number six, application number one-nine dash one-one, uh, excuse me, one-nine dash one-six-six-one-five from Honolulu Liquor Works LLC.
Commissioners, my name is Jeff Sidon, the owner.
I may get on more, I'm the general manager.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-one-five. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number six, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-one-five is approved.
Thank you.
Mango jam, thank you.
Moving from the rodeo to the mango jam to the South Shore Market.
Summer time, that time of year.
Calling agenda item number seven, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-four-six from Free Spirits LLC. Mr. Gordon, please.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neo Gota appearing on behalf of Free Spirits LLC. To my right is Matthew Choi. We have no changes to this report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Motion to approve, Ms. Linnis, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-four-six. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-four-seven is approved. Let's go to the night market. Calling agenda item number nine, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-four-nine from Free Spirits LLC. Gentlemen?
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neo Gota appearing on behalf of Free Spirits LLC. To my right is Matthew Choi. We have no changes to this report either.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Commissioner, I think it's agenda item eight.
Pardon?
I think we're on agenda item number eight?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes? Did I call?
Call time?
Did I call mine? Just wanted to make sure everyone's paying attention. You know we're on agenda item number eight. Thank you for that. You wasn't paying attention. Do you have that correction?
Okay.
Okay. I got a question. I have a, um, can I see your exhibit B? The bar is detached from, actually, can you go over the, your diagram and explain how it, how it works?
Uh, so there's two designated drinking areas. One is that sixty-by-twenty rectangle on Awahi Street, and the other is that building five barn. So they can't take alcohol from the street to the barn. So though, there's security that's gonna stop them from leaving with their alcohol.
So there's two separate...
So there's two designated drinking areas in that licensed area.
Yeah. One is barn and one is...
One is barn and one is the street.
Yeah.
Okay.
And no alcohol can be transported between the two, correct?
No.
What's, what's the purpose of the line connecting the two?
Uh, so that it's within one premise.
But no one's gonna be using that line with alcohol.
But you have two separate licenses.
Two separate requests?
Yeah, but agenda, he had nine.
So the next one, agenda nine, that bar is gonna be up on a different property, but still connected to the event, but it had its own address, it's more separate. So the line is to connect these two separate beer garden, essentially, but no liquor can traverse over that line?
Okay, so the, where the sixty-by-twenty is next, Kiabi Street?
Awahi Street.
Yeah, I'm just looking at the report, it says...
This is the event you normally do, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Night street market.
Yeah, just...
Yep, yep. Okay, I think we'll clarify a little better on the next agenda item.
Motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-four-seven. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eight, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-four-seven is approved. Calling agenda item number nine, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-four-nine from Free Spirits LLC.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neo Gota appearing on behalf of Free Spirits LLC. To my right is Matthew Choi. We have no changes to this report.
Thank you very much. Commissioner? We have...
Uh, motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-four-nine. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number nine, application number one-nine dash one-six-six-four-nine is approved. Thank you, gentlemen, good luck. Let's go to agenda item number ten. This is a temporary license application, application number one-nine dash one-six-one-eight-four from Ming Dynasty Fish and Shrimp Company. Mr. Lu.
To my right is John De Hall. He's the president, and the record reflects Wayne Luke as consul. Mr. Hall is keeping mostly all of the employees, so... There are nothing to add to the investigator's report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
This is the location of Legend's Seafood, correct?
Yes.
Wow.
Okay, motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-six-one-eight-four. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number ten, application number one-nine dash one-six-one-eight-four from Ming Dynasty Fish is approved. Calling agenda item number eleven, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-zero-zero from Non-Stop Convenience Incorporated.
And the record reflects Wayne Luke as consul. Could I have a one-week continuance of this?
One-week continuance, commissioners?
Motion to continue, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-zero-zero for one week. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number eleven, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-zero-zero is continued for one week. Moving into the stock transfer applications, agenda item number twelve, application number one-nine dash one-six-one-five-six from GT Sim Inc. Mr. Keuchie?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Keith Keuchie for the licensing.
Chair, I'm gonna recuse myself.
Thank you. We noted for the reflector. Thank you, Mr. Keuchie.
We have no changes or additions to the investigator's report. This is a stock transfer that essentially removes Ms. Yang, so the new fifty percent shareholders are Ms. Sim and Ms. Takawa.
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Motion to approve, application number one-nine dash one-six-one-five-six. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twelve, application number one-nine dash one-six-one-five-six is approved.
Thank you.
We have Commissioner Miyashiro back, please. Thank you. Calling agenda item number thirteen, application number one-nine dash one-six-two-eight, uh, six-eight, excuse me, one-six-two-six-eight from Tokiharu and Kazuto.
Good afternoon, members of the commission. Neo Gota appearing on behalf of Tokiharu and Kazuto Inc., doing business as Yohei Sushi Restaurant. To my right is Alicia Marothez, representative of the company. We have no changes to this report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve, stock transfer application number one-nine dash one-six-two-six-six. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number thirteen, application number one-nine dash one-six-two-six-eight is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Calling agenda item number fourteen, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-four-zero from Wong Jin Corporation. Commissioner Ling? Ms. Wu?
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm Min Young Wu on behalf of Wong Jin Corporation. No additional corrections are necessary in the investigative report.
Thank you. Commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve, stock transfer application number one-nine dash one-six-five-four-zero.
I'm sorry, I can't second. What, can we, um...
Withdraw my motion.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Wu? Yes. I noted on the report that, that, um, Ms. Tomita was granted a waiver by the commission? Yes. So it was less than two years of the record that she submitted, same record. Okay, but we do have a record of her. We do have personal history and all of those cleared, because now she's the one-hundred percent owner of this corporation, correct? Yes. If we approve this? Yes, yes. Okay, so we do have her information? Yes. And how old is it? At the time, there were, um, putting in the application, it was less than two years. It was very close to two years, but it was less than two years. It was less than two years. And can you, um, assert for the record that, um, Ms. Suchin Tomita has not been convicted of any felonies in that time period? No. You can assert that? Yes. Okay. Thank you.
No, no, no. Motion to approve, stock transfer application, number one-nine dash one-six-five-four-zero. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fourteen, application number one-nine dash one-six-five-four-zero is approved.
Thank you, Ms. Wu.
We have back Commissioner Ling, please. Calling agenda item number fifteen, request number one-nine dash one-five-eight-eight-one from Lelea Bakery, true.
To my right is Megan Burks. Spelling has been divided. She is the director of operations. The record reflects Wayne Luke as consul. We have no changes to the investigator's report. The, the Yashabo is located right next to the Lelea Bakery, just put it together.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners?
Um, Mr. Lu, does applicant intend to create one continuous space? Or are they requesting to have one license over multiple spaces?
One license for the whole purposes, it does connect up.
What do you mean by it does connect up?
There is a, doors connecting, a door is connecting the restaurant to the bakery.
So, but these are gonna be separate restaurants?
They'll be separate, the restaurants will remain the same.
Can...
Yes.
I don't believe signages allow it.
What's that?
I, I don't believe two restaurant names signs are allowed.
That's, that's why we had to, we have to get the, until we pick it up, we have to get the name, the chain name cleared up. That's why I have a letter attached.
Can I request a motion to convene to executive session?
For that, can I ask one, clap your question? Mr. Lu, um, as I understand, exhibit B, I'm not exactly clear, but can, can, if I'm a customer of Lelea Bakery, can I walk through Lelea Shabo Shabo without going outside?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There is a door connecting.
Thank you.
Motion to convene to executive session.
Second.
The move in, the move in, all those in favor.
Aye.
The move in, the move in, executive session.
The first one, first one anyways. First, I mean, first I did. I mean, on the agenda.
Oh.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. We're now back on the official record. Commissioners, do you have any questions or type of action?
Motion to approve, application number or request number one-nine dash one-five-eight-eight-one. Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number fifteen, request number one-nine dash one-five-eight-eight-one is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number sixteen, do we have anybody from Stormy's Castro Pub? Please come forward. This is for a post-event report, commissioners.
Hi, my name is Sabrina Hazelhorst of Stormy's Castro Pub.
Thank you.
Should I spell my name?
Can you fill us in on how the event went and...
Yes. Did you receive the report?
We didn't.
Yes, we did.
So, um, yes, um, the music played from approximately eight to ten, because the musician was running late. And approximately two hundred guests attended. One thousand four hundred and twenty dollars in total off-the-sale sales. The area was cleared by eleven forty-five. Five security officers were there. No HPD officer. The, um, there was a violation, um, at ten fifteen when a guest walked past a security guard with a drink. So... That was basically what happened. And, um, like I said at the very end of our report, um, I don't anticipate doing another event like this in the foreseeable future.
Misses, do you have any good question?
No.
No, no action by the commission's report, it's just a post-event report.
Yes.
We appreciate your...
I wanted to know if they wanted to hear from enforcement. Yeah, she, she disclosed that she had the violation. Okay, all right.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Can we have what type of action for agenda item number seventeen through twenty-four, please?
Motion for the adoption of decision and order for agenda items seventeen through twenty-four inclusive.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. The adoption of decision and order, agenda items number seventeen through twenty-four inclusive are approved. Moving into adjudication.
Good afternoon, Joy Neely, appearing for the commission prosecution for tonight's adjudication items.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-five, Best Market Inc.
Mr. Chairman, to my right is Young Su Kliu. She's the president of Best Market Inc., the record reflects Wayne Luke as consul. I'm gonna ask for a two-week continuance. She claims that this matter was already adjudicated, so we're gonna, I've talked to Ms. Hori, I'm gonna check to see whether that happened or not.
Motion to continue, agenda item twenty-five, Best Market Inc., for two weeks.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-five is continued for two weeks. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, Sedexo America LLC.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Ms. Hori. Gabriel Prevenza on behalf of the licensee. To my right is Patrick Law. I already gave the spelling. He's the general manager of Sedexo America LLC. We weigh breed in the charges and would like to enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-six, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? Um, this is the first violation of possession slash use of an illicit legal drug on the premises. I recommend a penalty of one thousand dollars.
Mr. Prevenza, this person in question was, is not employed by the licensee, correct?
Correct.
So this was an attendee of the event?
Yes.
And what was the drug?
Marijuana.
What was the then?
This was the FM one hundred bash, so it was the...
Birthday bash.
Aloha. Not birthday, not birthday, but aloha.
Aloha.
I think the present main thing we wanna point out is, first of all, sorry for the violation. The licensee after receiving, there's actually two, so the back-to-back will be addressing them, and it's kind of the same explanation for both, but I'll give it again, is, uh, is their, their system wasn't really capable of... I think the present main thing we wanna point out is, first of all, sorry for the violation. The licensee after receiving, there's actually two, so the back-to-back will be addressing them, and it's kind of the same explanation for both, but I'll give it again, is their, their system wasn't really capable of monitoring this. And so they decided the best thing to do would just be to eliminate smoking in general from the licensed areas. So, you know, if there's smoke, then there's a problem automatically. So it's easier to, you know, you don't have to get into, well, what kind of smoke is it, that kind of thing. So going forward from the time, this was back in April 2018, all their events have only had very limited designated smoking area that's kind of easy to monitor, and the rest of the areas are probably dated 100%.
Thank you. So where was this event again?
It is the Waikiki Shell.
Waikiki Shell. So isn't smoking entirely banned?
There, there's, again, I wasn't the general manager this time, so I don't know.
By the, by the city?
By the city state, it's not entirely banned in there. Speaking with the Enterprise Services contact, they, there is smoking. I don't know how wide it used to be, but it, we informed them we're restricting regardless of where, and they actually told me last week that they actually, they just renovated, so they, they're, there's, there's a very small designated area period on property that nowhere will be able to smoke in it. So going forward, it won't matter for anything.
Thank you.
And is this prohibition including e-cigarettes as well?
Yeah, I believe so. My, my take on it should be for everything. In our interpretation of the ban in our areas will be anything, maybe smoking, cigarettes, any of that.
Okay, so you can more easily identify?
Yeah, basically, you see anything in the area, we're gonna say.
See or smell.
Yeah.
I have a question. Who does the bag checks for these events?
Bag checks are usually done at the gate, so that's usually either contracted through Enterprise Services or the promoter. So that's gonna be a different security staff than ours, as we discussed previously. We, we're more focused on the alcohol set area, so once they get through and into the area, we don't technically have the authority to search a person anyways, but we're looking for intoxication, we're looking for holding, we're looking for the wristbands. We would be, now we're looking for smoking, et cetera, things like that. But the actual bag check is done by another security force at the gate before they ever come into the area.
So large events like this, it is widely promoted to against contraband, which it is stated on their website as well as prohibited, so to speak. Do you guys emphasize that type of... Like, do you prohibit that and encourage that to the promoters who are promoting these type of events? Because certain venues such as these tend to attract that type of behavior, and, you know, these things are happening. So how, how are you guys communicating that to, because if, if I recall correctly, you guys are gonna be having a set list of security companies that are gonna be authorized to be used at these type of venues moving forward, correct? Or some type of change like that?
Well, they just, they always...
And this was prior. I understand that this was prior, but selecting those companies, does it also, as far as their experience, do they know, and, 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 you know, I guess, let me get to my point is, we just did an event, like, I just did an event, 3,500 people this past Memorial Day weekend. I didn't realize that when you have bag checkers, there's a skill set, and there's specifically what they're looking for, and what is stressed at the time of entrance and prior to entrance, which is in the event that it is found. It is either confiscated, or you are left to, to leave the venue entirely. So with that type of strict enforcement, which means you buy a ticket to the event, and if you're gonna be escorted off, or whatever the situation, and you don't have a point of reentry, it, ahead of time, it tends to, you know, the person thinks twice, they're probably gonna put it back in their car, or not gonna get caught with it on them, or whatever the situation is. But they're very specific about what you can bring in, the bags, what, you know what I mean, very small bags versus big bag, blankets, strollers, what have you. Is that anything like set in stone with you folks with these type of events?
I, I would, for us, I'd have to say the event is, it's probably not 100% set in stone. It's gonna be event per event, like the Blaze Down stuff. It, you know, it's event by event. It depends on the performer, et cetera. That, again, is done mostly through Enterprise Services on how they set up the security plan to get through. Once they get through, we, we implement our stuff. Now, going forward at the show, since I took over, I, I have been working with Enterprise Services and the promoters to be very clear of areas that are here going. So for an example, you will be getting an application, hopefully a model for an event coming up shortly, that I specifically said, this is your area of 21 and over seating that needs to be listed on your website. So the pool area is listed 21 and over for tickets. Everybody knows where that, that is, so there's no confusion of adults. We work with them to segregate 18 and under to decide where entry is, so we can keep them away from majority of the show. So we're taking our steps to make sure that we're informing those people. And then they also list to Enterprise Services, the Blaze Down Show page, which says what is prohibited. But again, what size bags and stuff is gonna be different for each show, what's checked is gonna be slightly different for each show, and that's Dexo's. I think, I don't know if it will appease you at all, but I think maybe what you're asking is, to the extent they can have influence over that procedure?
Correct.
Can they, will they, do they? I think the answer, and you can confirm, you will, to the extent they can. So when they're communicating with Enterprise Services, you know, for the next events, to the extent he can influence, you know, that, those type of decisions, and emphasize what they're, they have concerns over, you know, bringing alcohol in, bringing illicit drugs in, then I don't think he has a problem doing that.
Maybe pick April 21.
Okay.
Wrong game, maybe.
I was waiting for it to come up.
There was a show actually that second day. They restructured some of the security.
No violation, but...
Any further questions, Commissioners? Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-six, recommended fine of $1,000 is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number twenty-seven, Dexo America LLC.
Gabriel Prevenza, on behalf of the licensee.
Thank you.
To my right is Patrick Baugh. He's the general manager of Dexo America LLC. We would like to waive reading of the charges and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-seven, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? This is also a first violation similar to the last agenda item, the same date, so I recommend a penalty of $1,000.
Mr. Prevenza, was this also marijuana?
Yeah. Marijuana, it was a different area. Some of the previous agenda items took place, it occurred on the, what they call the second pool, which I understand does not actually have a pool. Disappointed me, but it's in the lawn area up towards the top, I believe. I would have to clarify based on that, but the pool area is generally up front. The second pool is probably where the chairs are, and that's probably where it occurred. And again, we've just changed the policy for these type of events and no smoking outside a very small designated area, which is also outside of the licensed premises.
Okay. And were these, were these individuals, I believe, did they, did they have wristbands? Were they 21 and over? Where were they on the licensed premises?
So... It's unclear from the report whether they had bands or not. From my understanding, they should have had pink bands to be in that area, to be in the lawn area. And there wasn't a banding system in place for, for age of one in the areas you could be in.
Motion to accept, second.
Sorry, I have a question for Ms. Neely. Why is this one charged for two people on one, one matter?
I, I believe it's charged by incident, so one of them took place at around 7:25 PM, the next one was around 8:40.
But as I understand it, the two individuals would have individually possessed, distributed, or used illegal drugs?
Yeah, they, they were found to both be, I think, one of them passed it, passed the joint to the other.
Motion to throw the recommended fine of $1,000. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. On agenda item number twenty-seven, recommended fine of $1,000 is approved.
Thank you. Appreciate the time you explained.
Calling agenda item number twenty-eight, 7-Eleven stores, number five, four, two, six, two. Move.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commission members, Kenneth O'Perry for the licensee, and Bladjo Pataki to my right, Director of Human Resources. We will waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea. Second.
Moved in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty-eight, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely? This is a first violation of sale of liquor to minor. Recommend a fine of $1,000.
You know, it's easy for us to just say that we terminated the employee, but we know that's not enough. So we've gone back to each store, have the managers go over the training, and the policies and procedures that the cashiers are supposed to do when they have a liquor sale. The problem has been that for these, for these instances anyway, the cashiers just were keying in a wrong birthday, so that the sale would go through. And a lot of times, that was because they were lazy, or for whatever reason that they weren't doing it. We don't have a permanent solution to this. I wish I could tell you that we did, but, you know, this is such a pervasive problem, because we have a quite, you know, there's a high turnover in, in cashiers and clerks for that kind of job. So we train one, you know, they're gone. Another one comes in, we train them again, but then the problem persists. So in the past, we've tried to introduce, we did introduce legislation to allow for unlimited scanning of IDs. But we've had opposition from the ACLU as well as the Office of Consumer Protection, where they object to bar, scanning of the barcode information, even if, even if that limited data is retained for a nanosecond, because they think that in that nanosecond, it could be hacked. So they've raised an objection. We weren't able to get our legislation passed, which would allow unlimited scanning. We weren't able to do it. They, we got opposition from some of the senators too. So we're gonna try again. Let's see what, because we think that if we're allowed to do that, because right now, the current law says that you can, you can scan only if you have some reasonable doubt that the customer is under the required age. If you don't have that doubt, you cannot scan. That's what the law is now.
So, Mr. Devo, was this person, was the ID asked and checked?
ID was asked. In, in each of the, in the four cases that you're gonna hear next, the IDs are asked for.
Right. So, hold on. My next question is, was it a vertical ID?
Yes.
Okay, so, do you guys have the ability to scan then if there is a reasonable doubt that that person is of age?
Well, we have the software.
You do?
We do. But we, we're not, we, we...
Wouldn't, wouldn't a vertical ID meet the threshold of reasonable question, a reasonable doubt as to whether that person is 21?
Well, you would, yes.
Yes, go ahead.
But OCP, Office of Consumer Protection, they disagreed with that. They said that the data, which goes to the backroom computer, had to be broken up and analyzed, and it takes a nanosecond before it returns an answer whether or not to scan the age of the person. So they objected to even using that, because they consider that it's storage, that we're retaining it even for a nanosecond, which is, which sounds ridiculous, although, you know, they're, they're correct. So they object to just our process, you know, our machine. They said if we had a standalone unit where they just scanned and the data didn't go anywhere, just went in that unit, it didn't go on the internet, it didn't go to a line, they would have no problem with it. And so even if we could scan it, OCP had an objection to that, saying that, well, it goes to the backroom computers, and you guys can do it.
I understand the objection. What I'm asking is, is there a legal prohibition? Are you legally barred from doing any scanning?
That's, that's what it amounts to.
Okay, okay.
So let me refresh my memory. Didn't you bring down your computer specialist at, to the legislature for this, to answer questions concerning this?
Yes, yes, we did.
Yeah.
And that's how they discovered that the data goes from the front POS to the backroom computer, and then comes back. In other words, that POS that you see, the register system you see, is not contained. So that's where the objection came in, that it takes a nanosecond, you know, to get the answer back, but they said, well, it can be hacked. The OCP brought down their tags to counter what we were trying to tell them. And, you know, that's where everything stalled out for us.
But you are going to continue to navigate the legislature?
Well, we, we're trying to see how we can maybe modify. We spent thousands and thousands of dollars on the software so far, but we're trying to figure out, okay, how can we do it just right here, you know, without going and purchasing $5,000 standalone scanners, you know? How can we utilize our software and our scanning system to do it, you know, without breaking the law? So that, that's where we're at right now.
So I think we talked about this before, is other, other licensees had had, they discovered that their cashiers were entering their own birth dates or had one. And we talked about an audit system, where it alerted, or you could audit trail a specific cashier for their shift period, and see that they were entering 1961 January, or whatever, maybe, in five consecutive sales or what have you. Is that something that you guys can do?
We, we just started that. Because of this, we started that process, and we, we have discovered a handful of employees that were doing it, because they, let's say, in a week, they had about 20 transactions with the same birthday. Highly unlikely that the same customer came back 25 times a week. So when they were questioned, some of the reasons they gave us, one of them was, well, this guy, he looks like, I, so, you know, we knew his age, we asked his ID once before, so uncle comes back every time, so instead of him getting out his ID, they just punch in a date that could be their birthday, or a date that you remember, you know, just to get the transaction done. You know, instead of going through the process of asking for an ID, keying in the actual birthday that's on the ID, you know, they, they're taking shortcuts. And we have discovered a handful of them with the same excuse. And we had to pull them out and say, okay, this is how you need to do it. So they were innocent, free-travel. It doesn't matter if you know him. It doesn't matter how busy you are, you just need to follow the process, which is, here's the birthday. Secondly, you know, all of these sales were vertical. You know, and we showed them in training, this is a vertical ID. Chances are, this person is underage.
That's different from the uncle that comes in all the time that you know. They shouldn't recognize any of these individuals.
Yes, yes. Correct. So, so in these cases, we terminated employees. There were no excuse for what they did or didn't do. They just didn't follow the process, and we had to go back to the stories and say, look, you need to talk to everybody. When, when I got wind of the first two or three violations, I called operations, and I says, look, I told you guys that there's this thing going on. You guys need to get to your people and tell them, they have to do the right thing, you know, just, just do the right thing. Unfortunately, you know, all of this happened in a very short period of time, but we are where we are today.
Can I just correct the record? It's a compliance mistake.
I, I recall you folks implemented a zero, well, not zero tolerance, but 100% identification check. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Do you guys have CCTV or any kind of video looking at the register?
Yes, we do.
Have you ever done audits of your video?
Yes, we, we do look at them, you know, especially in the case of violations, we look. We have over 1,000 transactions per store per day. So unless we go in the backroom and pull those transactions down and see what time it happened, which is kind of tedious, and then go look at the video, but when we have a violation, we go and look to see what happened, what employees doing. We have cameras right overhead, looking at the register. In some cases, we see where the, the computer system locks up. It's refusing to go forward. It's telling this, this sales associate that this is a minor. But for, for whatever reason, the sales associate thinks that the machine's broken, so they do it again. The red screen... The red screen pops again. So the line's building up, and in their mind, something's wrong. So they end up keying in their own birthday or some made-up birthday to get the transaction through. That's no excuse. But, you know, we say, if you see the red screen, that means it don't, don't allow it. There's nothing wrong with the system, trust the system.
And I, I understand it can be burdensome to look through random audits of your, your video data. But for us as commission, we have to balance safety of the public. And I'm wondering, maybe as, and I can't tell you what to do, but maybe doing spot checks and finding violations internally could serve as a specific and general deterrent to this kind of conduct where you can discipline, you know, the termination of employees who are either overriding the system or not complying with the 100% ID checks, just as a gesture.
Is there a way to lock out the sale? That, so you're saying that a red screen will come out, but there, there's a way to override it? Is there, is there a way to make it so that once a red screen comes up, they punch in a wrong number, that sale cannot continue?
I have to check with system, but a lot of time, not a lot of time, sometimes they do press the wrong key. They do enter the wrong birthday, especially the birth year. And so when they redo it again, it goes through because they, they, they see the right number. So if they do it, if they bump up the first time and we make a policy or, you know, like they can't sell, it might be a clerk, you know, the clerk making an error. We've had seen, you know, in the video, when you look at the video, the clerk punched the wrong digit by mistake. He had two, four, five digits correct, and the last digit for the year, he pressed the wrong key. So we knew he made an honest mistake. But, yeah, we can, we can look into something where it just locks them out completely on the first.
And that maybe you need a manager override code to, you know, make it happen? Or, you know, sorry, we can't continue with this sale, you know? But it seems like it's a kind of a pervasive issue, so if you can address it, it might help you folks. Anyway, let's move on to this. So this is for Agenda Item 28. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 28, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number 29, 7-Eleven Stores.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner O'Perry for the licensee, Blake Jopotaki. To my right, we waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 29, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely. This is a first violation. I recommend a penalty of $1,000.
Mr. Prevenza.
This is also a violation which stems from an alcohol compliance enforcement project, enforcement project. For all the reasons that we gave in the prior case, we say again, rather than burden the commission with our.
Mr. Prevenza, was the ID asked and checked?
Yes, ID was asked. Check is a, is a good question. Certainly was asked. It was a vertical ID.
Yeah, that's, and I have been noting this to other licensees with the same violation that may want to speak with your cashiers, especially ones that, you know, English is a second language, that checking the ID is not the requirement. Not selling to minors is the requirement. Because sometimes cashiers just check the ID and then punch in a number that they know because they think checking the ID is the requirement.
Right.
So I would recommend, you know, perhaps during your retraining sessions, emphasizing to them that that's not the requirement. The requirement, you're using the ID in order to meet the requirement. So I, I would recommend clarifying that to some of your cashiers or all of them.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 29, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number 30, 7-Eleven Stores, number one, number 54229.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commission members Kenneth O'Perry for the licensee, Blake Jopotaki. To my right, we waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 30, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely. This is a first violation for adjudication purposes. I recommend a penalty of $1,000.
Mr. Prevenza, anything to add?
No.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 30, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number 31, 7-Eleven Stores, number 54109.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commission members Kenneth O'Perry for the licensee, to my right, Blake Jopotaki. We waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 31, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely. For adjudication purposes, this is a first violation. I recommend a fine of $1,000.
Mr. Prevenza.
Nothing to add.
And again, I, I need to ask that the ID was asked?
ID was asked for. It was a vertical ID.
Thank you. Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 31, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved. Calling Agenda Item Number 32, 7-Eleven Stores, number 54107.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commission members Kenneth O'Perry for the licensee, to my right, Blake Jopotaki. We waive reading of the charge and enter a plea of no contest.
Motion to accept a no contest plea, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 32, the no contest plea is accepted.
Ms. Neely. This is a first violation for adjudication purposes. I recommend a penalty of $1,000.
Mr. Prevenza.
The ID was asked for. It was a vertical ID.
Motion to approve the recommended fine of $1,000, second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number 32, the recommended fine of $1,000 is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you.
Agenda item number 33, do we have any administrative matters?
None.